Street clothes, you know that's a big mess.
Uh, no, I don't know. I don't know where it came from. Putting on the ritz. I thought you were gonna say minimum. It's a two-drink minimum.
I should've used the restroom and pressed it down, but it's okay. I'll go eventually. I'll get this thing started. Yeah, you did. I know, but all these people waiting.
Okay, good afternoon, council. So, good to see everybody back. I will call our city council work session November 4th to order. And turn it over to Jay Chapa.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we don't have anything on upcoming or recent events, but I do have some organizational updates and employee recognition. I'm gonna start off with DJ Harrell from our development department to introduce a new
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Council, City Manager Chapa. I stand before you to introduce our newest employee in Development Services. We've hired a deputy director in Development Services. This is Jillian Fermolin Shot. She comes to us with 25 years of public service experience. Most recently, she served as Chief of Staff at GSA. And her, some of her strengths are organizational management, leading cross-functional teams, and, you know, working with the public. I'll allow her to say a few words.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm ecstatic to be here. It is my first day, so it's been kind of a whirlwind. And I'm sure that everyone that I've met so far is gonna be looking for me to have already memorized all the names. So, just bear with me. But again, just great to be here. I live in the city of Fort Worth. I'm passionate about the city. And even though I'm from Ohio, I've been here for 20 years and I haven't left. So, just again, happy to be here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Next up is William Rumley, and he will talk to us about Municipal Court Week. Oh, and Chief Judge Gonzalez as well.
William, as you're getting started, DJ, was that your way of making sure we knew who Jennifer was, so we stopped calling you directly? I'm surprised you didn't hand out her card and her cellphone number immediately. DJ would like us all to stop calling. No teasing Jennifer, welcome, we're glad to have you. William, please.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, City Manager's Office, William Rumley, Court Director, Municipal Court Director. I'm excited to say that this week is Municipal Court Week. Every year, the first week of November, municipal courts across the state are recognized. We try to celebrate staff and also the function of municipal courts. This year is a special celebration for us. We're celebrating a century of service, so from 1924 into 2024, 100 years of service to the municipal court in the city of Fort Worth. We are, have food trucks that came out today. We want to thank our local, small, our food vendors, I'm sorry, Sawmark BBQ, Funky Town Funnels, Flores, Home Cooking, and Hale on Wheels. All were out here today to provide lunch and support us. And we had lots of people out there and they did a great job. So, we're here to represent the 160-plus employees in municipal court. We have the honor to be able to do that. As I said, we're celebrating 100 years, and sometimes things come circular. You know, in the old days, the judge would ride around in a wagon and go from town to town. And, well, we go out in different places in town with our court and the community. So, some things come circular. Obviously, from a technology standpoint, there's been different types of enhancement. But at the end of the day, it's still exceptional customer service that makes the difference. So, one of the things we talk about is the only person someone may have a contact here in the city may be the court. And so, we want them to say Fort Worth's a great place because they had a great experience with us. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Judge Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council members, City Manager Chapa, staff, and guests. In celebration of Municipal Court Week, I would like to take this time to recognize and extend my appreciation to everyone who has assisted with or been involved in addressing the needs of our municipal court. First, I would like to thank you, Mayor and Council members, for your continued support of our municipal court, addressing the needs of our citizens, assisting with court engagement and community outreach through the individual council member court in the committee warrant forgiveness videos, and your consideration and appointment of our municipal court judges. Your commitment and leadership are truly appreciated. Next, I'd like to thank the city marshals. As the municipal court's enforcement arm, I would like to thank Marshal Swift, Chief Marshal Carey, and all the deputy marshals for their work in serving the court's legal processes, keeping our courtroom secure and safe while maintaining order, and protecting our judges, court staff, and citizens that conduct their daily business in the municipal court. To the court administration and staff, I'd like to thank the court administrators, supervisors, and municipal court staff for their professionalism and hard work in serving our community and citizens that visit our municipal court on a daily basis. Their efforts do not go unnoticed. To the prosecutors, I would like to extend my appreciation to Chief Prosecutor Stacy White and the municipal court prosecutors for their dedication to justice and their commitment to upholding the law in service in their community. The professionalism and integrity ensures that our municipal court remains fair, efficient, and accessible to all. To the judges, I would like to thank the judges for their service to our community and for their fairness and integrity they bring to the municipal court. Their dedication, and, I'm sorry, their dedication to justice, public safety, and due process helps ensure that every person is treated with respect and given the opportunity to be heard under the law. To our court director, William Rumley, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for Mr. Rumley for his professionalism and dedication to ensuring the smooth operation of our courts. Thank you for your support and for the valuable work you do in serving our community and our municipal court. And finally, ACM Johnson, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to Assistant City Manager William Johnson for his outstanding work in supporting and facilitating the needs of our department. His dedication and initiative has been instrumental to our judicial department for facilitating the process to increase the hourly rate of pay for our substitute judges and expediting the recruitment and appointment process to fill the vacant full and part-time judge positions. In closing, I would like to say that our municipal court could not function without the collaboration and support of all who I've already recognized here today. As we look ahead, we at the municipal court remain committed to serving the citizens of Fort Worth with transparency, compassion, and excellence. It is an honor to serve the city with you, for you, and alongside of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge William, appreciate you. Counsel, when you have a second, go through this annual report. And it's funny, I don't, y'all need to bring back the obligatory staff photos that look like school photographs. Did you see them at the back? I don't think we do that anymore. I think department heads would love that. Those are really funny.
Yes, Mayor, and just one more thing we did highlight in there was A.D. Marshall, which our building's named after, our namesake. We did actually get to host their family earlier this year, and they came back for our opening ceremony this Monday. And so, as one of the longest-serving employees of the city of Fort Worth, outstanding family, and they continue to carry that legacy. So, they are highlighted in our magazine this year.
Thank you, William, we appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, I'd like to call up William Johnson to recognize the Golden Lasso program.
Good afternoon, William Johnson, Assistant City Manager for Public Safety. Come on up, guys. In 2023, TCU student Wes Smith was randomly shot and killed in the West 7th Street Entertainment District. In response to growing nightlife safety concerns, Mayor Mattie Parker, Councilwoman Beck led the city of Fort Worth and, as we assembled, department heads and stakeholders, including Fort Worth PD, TPW, Code Enforcement, Fire, the 7th Street Bar Owners Association, Downtown Fort Worth Inc., Stockyards Inc., the Near Southside Inc., JPS, and others to implement safety programs in our entertainment districts citywide. The city contracted with Safe Night LLC to conduct a comprehensive assessment of our entertainment districts and make recommendations on how we could improve. As a result, we implemented safety measures throughout the area that improved lighting, controlled traffic, parking, provided higher visibility of police and security, all supporting on-street safety. The Golden Lasso program was also birthed from this effort in coordination with our consultants and the committee, and it closes the loop with improved safety programs inside places of business in these entertainment districts. The Golden Lasso program is a free and voluntary accreditation program that recognizes bars, restaurants, and venues committed to creating a safe, enjoyable nightlife experience. Participating establishments formalize their safety practices through written policies and employee training. They've invested in necessary safety improvements. They emphasize the concept of safety-branded entertainment in Fort Worth. This approach enhances patrons' confidence and peace of mind while promoting collaboration between businesses and public safety partners. Since launching the program, some patrons are now traveling from Dallas and other surrounding cities specifically because of the sense of safety and hospitality that Fort Worth's nightlife offers. Today, we're proud to recognize 16 establishments that have earned the Golden Lasso accreditation, officially designating them as leaders in nightlife safety and community well-being, many of whom are here with me today. Some of them include Bar 2909, Reservoir Bar Patio and Kitchen, Coy Wetzel Riot Room, Whiskey Garden, Junk Punch, Bodega West 7th.
You're doing great, William, keep going.
One of my, one of my favorites. Bodega West 7th, Dirty Laundry, Rusty Nickel, Ice House, Stars Basement Bar, Stars Cafe and Cocktails, Towns Drive-Thru, Proper, El Shincon, Ampersand, The Shot Cellar and Shipwreck. This program is available for all businesses in all entertainment districts throughout the city. Bar and restaurant owners that would like more information on this program can reach out to our Golden Lasso program coordinator, Kimberly Tyler at 682-263-5852. Congratulations. I'll take a quick picture, if that's okay, and any of you that want to join.
Of course, and Councilwoman Beck, I think.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody here for being part of the solution for the city of Fort Worth and not part of the problem. Because of the hard work that you've done, we've seen crime drastically decreased in the West 7th area, and so I appreciate everyone's hard work. Also, he's lurking in the back, and I don't know why he didn't come up here with us, but I'd also like to thank, I see Lieutenant Genualdo back there, he's our, in charge of our West 7th detail. So, thanks for all the hard work that PD's put into this as well.
Thank you.
You want to do a picture?
Mayor.
Yes, Carlos, please.
Before we do a picture, I have a question. William, can you give me a very quick bullet point? How are we doing on encouraging businesses in the Stockyards to join in on the Golden Lasso to get accredited?
I know that Stockyards business, the Stockyards Inc. is part of the, of the committee, and we've encouraged both near-southside businesses, Stockyards businesses, downtown businesses to all actively participate. And we, what we're looking at here is just the start of a much, much broader citywide program. And to your point, we want to reemphasize that this is available to all bars and restaurants throughout the city.
Right. And any information that you gave me to keep me updated on the progress there, I keep in touch with Stockyards Inc. on it. Want to encourage more because we're getting new bars coming in to the Stockyards, and it's very, you know, present on my mind to make sure that they understand, you know, the environment we want to encourage, and that is a safe one for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Come on, police guys, come on up here. You're a part of this. Fire.
Thinking it's waste management. We walked out and they were all sitting here. That's all for organizational updates and employee recommendations. If you'd like me to move into informal reports.
Let's do it.
All right. First informal report, 25-0119 Quarterly Development Activity Report for Q3, and DJ Harrell, Development Services, is here to answer any questions.
No, I just need to ask him a question just to keep him on his toes. No, I'm joking.
You caught a break there, DJ.
Yeah, you did.
The next one's 25-0120 Athletic Field Improvement Plan. Dave Lewis, Parks and Rec is here.
Dave, I know, why don't we walk through this IR if you don't mind? Thank you, sir. I know Councilmember Hill has questions, but there's some good information here, lots of questions circulating around athletic field improvements.
Good afternoon, Dave Lewis, Director of Park and Recreation. Yes, as specified in the informal report, we've actually had two studies done in the last five or so years. One of them's really focused on sports tourism and establishing whether the city of Fort Worth has an opportunity to capitalize on the sports tourism industry, and the report stated, yes, we absolutely do. It would take a substantial investment, and the next phase of that study was to start to identify some locations, and we've studied a couple of locations, and where we've landed right now is because Rolling Hills already has an established complex, the cost to upgrade that to not only a sports tourism facility, but also for more local play is probably the best route to go. And then, the second part of the report does call out another study that we did, more of our city-owned complexes for local play, and also identified a pretty significant gap for a city of our size and the popularity of sports to a tune of about $80 million in deficit in sports fields. And so, what the, what we have done is prioritized the improvements and the additions of fields into two phases. One phase being the 2026 bond where we identified improvements to Rolling Hills, West Park, Alliance, and then Gateway Park as well. And the 25 million that's currently proposed for Gateway Park isn't all for athletic fields. It would go to the next phase of improvements for that $140 million master plan, so it's yet to be determined how much of that would be spent on athletic fields. And then, with the balance of the remaining fields hopefully being proposed in a 2030 bond, with the plan really to be up to speed and everything in alignment with the number of fields that we should have by 2037. That's kind of the plan that we've put forward for now.
Thank you, Dave. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Dave. And I, now, you and I have been in conversations with the Sports Commission on what sports tourism, specifically soccer, lacrosse, what that would look like, as well as addressing the local play issues that we have. And there's been talks about public-private partnership, maybe the only way to do that. Can you talk through that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, there's, there's several avenues that we could go with public-private partnership. A lot of them revolve around having a partner actually manage the facility, for them to partner with us to build additional fields. They would obviously need to be able to recuperate that investment somehow. So, definitely lots of partners out there that we're willing to talk to, and we've had some really preliminary conversations. But yes, we've worked very closely with Visit Fort Worth and the Sports Commission. It's about an $11 billion industry that we're not getting a lot of right now, so we really want to make sure that we're doing our best to get involved in that.
And then, some of the questions I've gotten just from bond conversations, and then as some of the soccer fields have come up, what can the public do to voice their opinion on where, where they think soccer fields and some of these partnerships should be with local play? Is it best for them to reach out to the Parks Department, or is it to make comments through the bond?
I think all of the avenues are good, and we've, we've done a substantial amount of outreach, especially when we did the field study that we did for the, for the Park Department fields. We met with almost all of the major soccer providers, football, lacrosse, pretty much all of the organizations, and got from them. How many do you serve now? How many could you serve if you have more fields to really get to that methodology of how many fields we need to be set by 2037? Our, our approach on this Phase 1 in the 2026 bond was really to improve the complexes in all parts of town, so we have a north with Alliance, a west with West, a south in Rolling Hills, and then Gateway Park as well. So, we really tried to tackle all those at once. With West being a priority because those fields have been unplayable, we wanted to make sure to get those back online, the four fields there, and obviously to expand. The master plan calls for like 12 fields and eight diamonds out there, so that's a complex that we see a lot of potential in.
Question for you, Dave, related to the public-private partnership piece in this, in the Sports Commission, have we done kind of an inquiry to the public on who might be interested in partnering in a more official capacity and what the private sector market would tell us?
We have not yet. We could do an RFP or an RFI, just a request for information and to find out who's interested, and we have not done that approach. A lot of it has been through Visit Fort Worth, they're really the ones who have that expertise, and with the national outreach and procuring events and things here in the city, but we could definitely do a formal outreach.
And I'll leave that to both you and the Sports Commission, but I do think most people understandably believe it's the responsibility of the city to think through what that should look like. And maybe we get nothing back, but if it's, if it's not too much work on staff time to just inquire more officially across the country with organizations that we know are reputable and could operate a facility like that, I think it could be helpful, for sure.
Yeah, in, in the informal conversations we have, we know there's at least half a dozen organizations who would love to really explore that deeper, so that's definitely an option. Similar to what we're talking about with Gateway with the $140 million master plan, if we keep doing 25 million at a time, we're not going to get there.
Right.
It really is going to take alternative means, and I think most people would, would believe that some of the activities aren't necessarily things that you would expect the city to fund. More kind of private dollars would help with those things as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My second comment would be related to recreational sports and local sports. We all understand kind of the phenomenon around select sports and that impact on rec leagues. I don't, I'm not saying we don't do a great job, but I want us to maybe dig in a little bit to understand, have we seen a dip in availability and access to recreational sports across the city? Should the city of Fort Worth be sponsoring and paying for more rec leagues through our own staff opportunity? That can come back to us whenever the timing works best, but I, I have seen a definite lack of equity across the city when you look at different rec league opportunities for kids, and you have a lot of families that are trying to hold it together, and it's becoming increasingly more difficult to compete. So, to the extent the city needs to step up and do things differently, I'd be really interested in supporting that.
Yeah, one of our initiatives that we've brought to council before with this update, we've talked about really different levels. We've talked about sports tours, and we've talked about local recreation, and then really the very entry-level recreation that also serves for wraparound services for our children that are in schools. Many of them can't afford to get into any of the leagues, and, you know, we see the latchkey kids where they go home with nothing to do. We'd rather keep them at the schools. That's why we launched our after-school program with sports, and so we really want to keep ramping that up as well. That is a solution to getting more kids active, more kids engaged, and at a level that their families can participate in.
Thank you. Councilmember Peoples?
Dave, I know it's in Councilwoman Martinez's district, but Gateway Park is literally three blocks from our house. I walk out of District 5. So, talking about public-private partnerships, we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago from, I think it's the Friends of Gateway Park, they announced that initiative. Are we working with them? So...
Yes, ma'am, yeah, the Gateway Park Action Coalition. We've had several conversations with them, and we're really walking through how we activate them. It could be through advocacy, through helping us find partners that are engaged. We really see an opportunity to have them really help steward that project.
Good, okay.
Thanks, Dave. Next up is 25-0121 Broadband Project Update with Kevin Gunn. He's here to answer any questions.
Date, Kevin?
It's Sally, not Kevin.
Hi, Sally.
Thank y'all. Sally Trotter, Deputy CTO IT Solutions, not Kevin Gunn, he's on vacation this week, so you get me. So, yes, ma'am, how can I help you?
I just wanted you to give a brief update on where we are. I mean, I have the IR, but I think just for general public purposes, where are we on the broadband update?
Sure, sure. So, if y'all remember, we started this with the neighborhood Wi-Fi program several, a couple of years ago. Got that all started and got that out there, and we're still seeing very robust engagement in that, in the five neighborhoods that we're in. We're seeing about 5,000 unique users a month come in still on that. We did do, as Dave was speaking about, we did do a public-private partnership, RFP, and we ended up with Sprocket, and we assigned that contract to them about two years ago. And so, they've been going through the process of getting the equity funding, getting everything in place, and getting ready to begin, you know, drilling and putting fiber in the ground, and that is occurring now. So, we're starting to see that throughout the city. A lot of crews are out there. Really excited. TPW has been our closest friend as we've been working on this and working on the permitting to get everything in. And so, they're hoping to come to market to residential and commercial partners probably within, I believe, late '27. I've got JT Fisher... I've got JT Fisher with me, who is their Chief Operating Officer, and he's just here to kind of speak to any of the mechanics behind it, should there be any other questions. But we're making progress, so we're very excited about it.
I had one follow-up question. When it launches in 2027, what is the communication plan to get it out to residents?
They're working on that right now. As they are beginning to do the drilling and all the, putting the fiber in the neighborhoods, they're doing door hangers, and there's a communication out in the neighborhoods so that they know that drilling is occurring, this kind of thing. So they are, they will have a full court press on, you know, what they're bringing to the table, what it'll cost, you know, which neighborhoods they're going to start with and all of that. So that is in progress.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Blaylock.
Sally, I just have one additional question. As I was reading through the IR, it indicates that sites will go live when the entire ring is completed and tested. Is that first ring going live in 2027? And if so, what's the overall timeframe?
That is the plan. I'll let JT maybe speak a little bit more to that.
So we're building, we're building a big network, 275 miles, but it is, think of a cloverleaf. So you basically have a central ring, and then you have four rings around that. We do expect that in some areas, we'll be able to light individual kind of leaves ahead of that date, but the overall completion date is expected at end of '27, where everything would be lit.
And if you remember, this is underpinned by the municipal network. So what we will start off with, as they get the rings built and healthy and serviceable, then we will take the 200-plus city locations, and we will put them on this network as a, you know, that's what will service us. So that gives them the platform, I guess, if you will, to get out into the neighborhoods and begin to deliver services to all the different neighborhoods, so.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Before they could leave the podium. What progress can you report on the implementation of broadband technology on East Rosedale and East Lancaster?
East Lancaster is part of our build. It has not started yet, so that is what, that'll be coming between now and '27. There is the whole East Lancaster and East Rosedale TPW kind of projects that we are connected with and tied into. So as we begin working those, then we'll, that'll all come together. So I apologize, I don't have a date or anything like that, but that's part of it.
You're going to do it concurrently with other stuff?
Yes.
Mr. Flores, if I can just add that we have about 200,000 roughly feet permitted already to work on, and that is one of the areas that is permitted for work. So you're going to see that toward the earlier part of the project. It kind of, east, west, and south of Fort Worth are in permitting now, and then we'll move north. So that'll be on the earlier end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both.
Right, thank you.
Thank you all. Up next is 25-0122 Community Partnership Fund for the participation in the Joan Klein Park Refresh Project. Then Kristi Ann Simmons is here to answer any questions.
No questions.
All right. 25-0123, the Irrigation Ordinance Compliance 2025 Update, and Chris Harder is here to answer a question.
If Chris could come give a rundown of what we plan on doing with this. Thank you, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Maybe start with just kind of a big picture and why we're investing so much time and effort in conservation. So there's really two components to conservation that are affecting our utility. One is the actual water system. And what we are trying to do is reduce our peak demands. So when you talk about the peak demands, where are they coming from? They're coming from the irrigation systems. So that's the first goal. The second goal is to overall, to reduce our overall water usage, and that goes to our supply. That's part of a commitment we're making as a regional partner to reduce our water system usage. So when you look at the per capita usage, you know, the metroplex is generally a little higher than what you see down in Austin, what you see in San Antonio. The cheapest water, I've seen many different articles about it, is existing water. So you think about, where does new water come from? Conservation is a water, is a water strategy. Reuse is a water strategy. Once those kind of systems are exhausted, then you're looking at actually reservoirs. And where would those reservoirs be located? You're talking about moving water from east Texas to this area. So that's extremely expensive. So, you know, we had an IR last year where we talked about the goals for this year. You all approved a system where we would have a notice that would go to a customer when they were violating the irrigation ordinance. And that would be followed by a $25 assessment, a $50 assessment, and a $75 assessment. So we've gone through that this summer. We presented the data in this IR, and what we found is that we've got a stopping point where, after that $75 assessment, what do we do? I will tell you that what we've done is we've been trying to get with a lot of our commercial customers that have irrigation meters that are, you know, the group that have seen these kind of four violations in four consecutive months. And we've realized that a lot of the accountants are just paying these fees without necessarily changing the irrigation systems. So we've been reaching out to a lot of the different commercial customers and trying to get with their maintenance staff to get them to change the irrigation settings on their systems. But what we have in place for next year with this ordinance amendment is it clarifies what the process we would like to have next year. And that is, we would continue to use this, this one month of notice, followed by 25, 50, 75. After that, if they're still not compliant with the ordinance, what we would be doing is we would send them a letter stating that if you don't comply with the ordinance, by this date, we are going to turn off your irrigation meter. Or in the case of like a residential meter, we would shut it off at the backflow on the irrigation side. We're not going to cut off anybody's water for their domestic indoor usage. Talking about irrigation systems. And we would then reestablish the service after they showed us that their irrigation controller was in compliant with the ordinance.
Do we think that the current dollar amounts associated with the fines are sufficient to curtail behavior? And is that something that we should look at, increasing that as a deterrent? Because those seem pretty low. If, I'll say this, if I wanted nice lush green grass in the middle of August, I'll pay $75 a month for it, so.
So my answer to that is, I look at this as a multi-year effort. So I will tell you, if we go forward with what is proposed as this ordinance amendment, this time next year, I should really have no commercial customers that are in violation of the ordinance. Right? So either, either they're going to be in compliance with the ordinance at this time next year, or they're going to have their water shut off, and it won't be turned back on, and we're talking about the irrigation system, until they show compliance with the irrigation ordinance. So that can be done very quickly, but this is, this is like the closing process that we've kind of missed with the process that we got right now.
You got Elizabeth? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Flores.
Chris, I'm not going to preface too much the upcoming meeting that we have, just as a data point, you know, for you to consider. I've been receiving more and more calls from HOA specifically that have concerns about the manner of billing, right? The manner of receiving notifications that they are in violation of it. So look forward to our meeting so we can do a deeper dive on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next up is 25-0124, the Mayor and Council Training and Travel Related Expenditures. Reggie Zino and Whitney are here to answer any questions.
Questions, Councilmember Hill?
Reggie, I don't know if this is the right question for you or Jay. Can you kind of go through a policy? Do we have a policy in place for council spending as far as travel goes? Or in a specific budget?
We have a policy, actually, that was just revamped, really around how we, how staff puts in all the information related to travel. There is a budget line item, and really, in the past, the policy has been that council members, you know, decide if they're going to travel somewhere and whether or not it's city-related, as long as it stayed within the budget of their, of their district office, it's been allowed. So there's not a specific policy that says you have to, you can only go here or there. And it's really more up to the city council member and their discretion.
Do you know what that budget number is?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. And I guess as I'm flipping through that and then looking at the backup too, my biggest concern, guys, honestly, I mean, now that it's all public information, is that we have a fiduciary duty to our taxpayers. I mean, the mayor's the ambassador of the city. I think that we just need to be respectful of who we serve every day. I don't think we should accrue any benefit, whether it's certificates or any other travel outside of what really benefits us as a council. And no one should enjoy the ride at the taxpayer dime. I mean, truly, that's the bottom line. I mean, I feel like I do my job without having to spend a whole lot of money, and I expect the rest of us to do that, too. And I know there's things that come up, but when I was reading this and then talking to the constituents about it, I mean, I think the general public has concern. And I just want to make sure that we're, as a body, doing the best job to manage the money respectfully. And maybe we do need to come up with some guidelines and policy for all of us to talk about and work through, especially since we asked, I think it was what, 3% budget cut across all the departments? I just want us to be cognizant of that as we move forward.
I think we're, we just finalized this new policy, and we're getting ready to send it to all the, I think we, did we send it to the district offices?
Yes, I believe.
We sent it to the district offices in the last couple of weeks.
Councilmember Beck?
Yeah, so my question really is piggybacking off of what Macy brought up, and that's the fact that we know that there's a line item for travel in the budget, but it very clearly has not been enforced. And so why hasn't it been enforced? Because when you look at, everyone is roughly around $25,000, with the exception of Michael Crane, who's at $84,000. And so without you being able to tell us what that number, that budget number is, I can look at everyone else's travel and say that at least one of these seems way out of whack. So was it kept in budget?
So I wasn't here for the last three years where this was kept. The policy or the practice previously has been that as long as the council member's district budget, the overall budget, not just the line item, is not, isn't gone over, that was, has been allowed.
So what happens when a district, when a council member travels, say, in December and January? Let's say they go to an inauguration, the DC inauguration, and the city pays for that, right? So that's a good example. So then you have staffing costs that come up at the end of the fiscal year, but you've already front-loaded your budget. So how do you keep within council budget if you've front-loaded your travel?
So my understanding, none of the council districts' budgets in the past three or four years, as we went through this exercise, have been exceeded. The whole district, but, so it includes beyond just travel, the travel line item, it includes other contractual, it includes all the different line items that are part of that budget.
Well, we can all see each other's budgets, and I've had my staff pull my colleagues' budgets, and I can tell you without a doubt that members of this council have gone over their budget. In fact, I went over two years ago by $100, so I don't think that statement's...
Overall, that's what, that was my understanding.
Yeah.
I wasn't here two years ago.
So I have to agree with Macy here that we owe a fiduciary responsibility to our residents, and that we have to be able with a straight face justify how we've spent their hard-earned tax dollars on our travel. I don't know that we can do it today, and it took us an inordinate amount of time to figure it out. And I'm glad that, I appreciate the work that staff did to get this to us. I would like to see a policy brought forward, one that holds us accountable to our travel and our overall council budget. We do that to every other department. We should be doing that to council as well. And so we can't, obviously, I don't know, you know, where Macy goes or where Chris goes, and their offices process that travel, so we really depend on city manager, the city management office, to hold us accountable. So my ask of you is, I know the inclination is to try to give council members what they want, but I'm asking you, as city manager, to make sure that you hold us accountable to our budgets the same way that we hold our department directors accountable to theirs as well.
I don't have a problem doing that, and I think part of it is each council member also holding themselves accountable, make sure what, that the travel is city-related and it stays within the budget.
But it's clear that maybe some discretion isn't where it needs to be. So in that instance, that's where we come in and regulate, when people can't self-regulate.
Same, same type of logic that I use with directors and assistant directors in the city.
Any other questions or comments for Reggie? No? No?
I do have a question on this subject, I guess. I'm sorry. There's been a lot of discussion, I guess, about travel and things of that nature. And in my previous service, you know, we've had recommendations on what we spend, but then there are those members who may travel, and there's members who don't travel. And so we may have our individual district budgets for travel, but what is the ideology or philosophy on, if there's X amount of council members and we each, you know, are going to, on average, spend, if we're not all spending it, is it an abuse that that money be spent by another council member? Does that make sense? Meaning if they're allocated $200,000 on average, you know, however much that is, and that's a really big number, but just throwing it out there for math's sake, if I don't spend mine, and Elizabeth, you travel more, is that somehow some type of exploitation?
Yeah, and it shouldn't be, because I want to take the position that I'm giving money back to the residents. You know, when I don't use all of my budget, I want to be able to say to my residents, I didn't use all my budget. I gave $10,000, $20,000, $5,000 back, you know, into the coffer. So if that's what we're doing, I think that takes away our ability to control our budgets and allows free spending.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
So, you know, other departments can reallocate money. Can we not do that, Jay? Reallocate? If I want to spend more money on a neighborhood event, and I've already exceeded all my budget for food, can I not reallocate some travel to that line item?
I think that's what I was talking about earlier. The policy has been staying within your district budget, your district office. So there's, and part of the issue, I think because the policy and practice has been that way, whenever one of our, the manager that was responsible to take care of this got sick, and other people were doing it that didn't have the experience, they were charging travel into other line items. That's what led to all the work trying to figure all this out, because of that practice. I think now we put a policy in place where that's being more specific, and there needs to be folks that are, that know what they're doing, allowing that to happen. So yes, you can go, you can reallocate, but there is a process for reallocating that involves going through the budget process.
I have a question.
And those kind of things, not just spending out of a different account when something doesn't fit into it. But it's always been by district office, not across all the districts.
Yes, Councilmember Hill?
And maybe it's a question for Reggie, too, but as we, when we travel or we have, I know for my office, when we expend money, we turn in receipts. Is that, can you walk me through the policy for the city employees? Everybody has to turn in a receipt or validate their purchases, correct? And are those approved, or is there a certain method that we have to do that?
Correct. Actually, the revised policy does deal with the reimbursement process, and we're asking that all of the various receipts be turned in within 10 calendar days. And then it's the mayor and council office responsibility to process that within five days. And then, once that transaction is approved, then the reimbursements, if necessary, would be included in the next following payroll cycle.
Is there any consequence for not turning in receipts currently?
Not that I know of. We are, we've been pretty consistent across city government in departments submitting timely receipts, because oftentimes there are reimbursements involved. But that's basically the policy that we had in place for all departments to process any, any of the travel-related expenses within that 10-day cycle.
Thank you, Reggie.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, of course, Councilmember Hill.
I'm just, you know, I'm the freshman here, you guys, so I'm trying to learn. So these are viewpoints that we have individually on, I guess, how people spend their money. Is this the forum for that? I mean, is that, is that where this needs to be discussed? Is it appropriate for it to be discussed?
I think it's appropriate. I think because it was requested by numerous council members as an IR, that's what you're getting today.
Just our individual opinions on how we're spending our money?
Well, and importantly, you know, it feels like maybe additional policy that's, has better framework may be necessary for council members. You know, to your point, everybody's going to have their own viewpoint, but if there's a general standard where the county council can generally agree this makes sense for travel reimbursement, I think it, I think it's healthy, I guess is the best way to say it.
Okay. Okay. And so where would those ideas be advanced? If someone had ideas, we knew the IR was coming today, and I would assume today that people would bring some of those ideas with some specificity on what they're suggesting. Is this also the form for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have any ideas that they'd like to put forth specifically?
Councilmember Nettles.
I just feel like, I feel like there's a disciplining happening, but there's not a lot of ideas being introduced into the space. That's just my personal opinion.
Councilwoman Nettles.
Yes. I don't know if I have ideas, but I do have a, well, I do have one. I think this conversation should be more broad as talking about each council fund balance. I don't think we, as a council, have a fund mechanism where we give our funds, such as you talked about, fund towards foods, organization, nonprofits, as well as into spending our travel. And so I think our travel was in one bucket where this is mayor and council's travel, and then we use our travel, because I haven't really seen our travel on our individual budget, other than historically, we have only used about $8,000 per council member in the history. So I think that, I brought this question before, that we should have a, a fund balance within each district, where they can choose if they're going to use it for travel, or if they're going to use it for giving nonprofits to assist them with some issues that they may have in the community.
So, this is just from a city manager. I think that's a really bad idea. It becomes a part of a nonprofit's annual budget request, or how they live, when the city gives a nonprofit money, whether it comes from a council member or it comes from a department, on an annual basis. And things change over time. I think making that decision should be, if you're going to give dollars to an individual nonprofit, it should be a city council policy decision, not an individual person's decision. That's just kind of-
And I don't disagree, right.
Administration 101. I mean, we might differ on the, on the, on the perspective, but then it becomes the very next year, that same, because I've lived it, the same nonprofit is expecting that $10,000 the next year after that, and the next year after that. And it becomes a, an issue for whoever the council member is the following year, so.
And I don't disagree with that. And I think travel probably falls under the same bucket. So, I mean, I think that you could excessively use travel and disrespect it, but at the same time, I would say, looking at my travel, speaking for me as a council member, when I travel, I do get information from other cities, other peer cities, and I bring those back to my district. And if you don't travel, doesn't, maybe you just don't have the time to do it. But my travel, I can only speak for my community, TML, NBC Leo, and all those are used, very important. I do have another question about the P card, because I've seen, I guess this new policy is going to require the P card not to be used when we're like, such as in DC, and only thing we can do is Uber or Lyft. And you're requiring council members who get paid $25,000 by the city of Fort Worth, which is not a penny in the bucket, the budget, to pay for Ubers and Lifts that can mount up to be about $900 when you're out traveling. And it took over six months, eight months, to be reimbursed. So I want some information about how we're going to pay for council travel when they are traveling on behalf of the city and not having to be reimbursed, and we answer that question.
I'd like to find out about the six to nine months to get reimbursed issue, because I hadn't heard that, but-
I will show you.
What we did is apply the same, what we applied to all the employees. And one of the reasons is because of the lack of receipts in a timely fashion. So, part of it is, is both sides working with each other to get the receipts to come back. But oftentimes, is, there has to be a memo written, and then somebody signs it that this is what I actually did. And then when we get asked public information, or what was the detail on that, we don't have the detail. So, that's, that's the reason that the policy is said to provide, for the, just like an employee expends it, and then they get reimbursed.
So, just let me finish the P card. So on that, this new, this new policy is going to require us not to use the P card when we're traveling, is that correct?
That's correct. That's what the policy has right now. We can, we can talk about changing it, so.
Right. I think we should, because I, I mean, Whitney can remember, and I think Joanne and others, it was DC two years ago, and it took six to eight months to be reimbursed. So, I'll get the information to you, but I think that we really, and if I'm traveling on behalf of the city, I'm there on behalf of the city.
Councilmember Hill, and then Councilmember Peoples.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Hall, oh, my tone is not disciplinary. It's not where I'm coming from. It's coming out of a place of concern and questioning. And I think out of this conversation, I do think it's healthy, because I think we can figure out a policy and procedures that work for all of us. Because you're right, some of us travel more, some of us travel less. There's not judgment on that. It's making sure that we stay in budget and be respectful of taxpayer dollars. That's where I'm coming from on it. I do think that we need to find a solution. And just, I think the IR came out of constituent concern of seeing travel, that people don't understand why council members travel or what they do. Everybody looks at the mayor as the ambassador, and so there are questions about what we do every day, especially if we're traveling out of the country, or we're traveling to other cities. And a lot of it's valid, Councilmember Nettles' point. You are learning about new cities, what they do, how they do it, and how we can improve. But I do think this conversation is, this should be a healthy result for us all, and figuring out what that looks like for policy and procedure.
Thank you for your response.
Councilpeople Peoples, and then Councilwoman Hall.
I appreciate it.
So, I just want to say this, and I probably am the most frugal person around here, but I think we have to be very careful. Every council person's district is different, and every council person has to go through their own thought process on travel. For example, I met with lobbyists yesterday, and they've already asked me to come to Washington. It won't be till next year, but I think, but they might not have asked somebody else. So I think we have to manage to our budget. I'm not going to try to tell you, Councilwoman Beck, or Councilwoman Nettles, or Councilwoman Hill, how to spend your budget, but I am going to ask you to stay in budget. And for me, it's as simple as that. Everybody makes different decisions about how to spend that money, and we need to try. We are given a budget, and we need to manage to that budget.
And then- Councilmember Hall, and then Councilmember Blaylock.
Thank you. I certainly agree with you, Councilwoman Peoples, as well, and I do appreciate your response, Councilwoman Hill. Maybe a recommendation, as we are traveling, maybe we bring that information back. If you're going to take a trip, or if you're going to travel, and it's going to be a benefit to the budget, and benefit to the city, and you're on the city's dime, maybe just providing some information about that. I mean, I know that we do our council reports on a weekly basis, on a monthly basis, or weekly, some of you seems weekly, but monthly, however that's done. But maybe you offer that information to give a highlight, so that it doesn't look felonious, or suspicious, or abusive, because we are, we all do have different, I would say, needs, expectations, and different issues that we're addressing, or even different aspirations on what you're trying to do. And I do believe that travel, PD, things of that nature are beneficial to the constituents that we serve.
Sure. Councilwoman Blaylock, and then Councilwoman Beck, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just make a comment. We're talking in broad term about this category called travel. I just want to kind of dive into that a little deeper, and say the vast majority of everything we're talking about in this category is representing the city in an official capacity, or training to be a better council person. And I think both of those are very valid activities. It's, you know, we're not talking boondoggles here, and I just don't want that to be the perception of the public.
Councilwoman Beck?
I think Councilmember Hall, to your point, we all do have different aspirations. Some of those are higher than others, but our taxpayers should not be footing the bill for those aspirations. And that's a firm belief in mine, and you might see differently. What I, and the reason why I initially asked for this is because, like Councilmember Hill, I think we owe a duty to our taxpayer. We are not transparent about our travel here on council. One thing that I would like to see, and I think it was a very good question, what policy, and I think I was very clear in that I wanted a clear budget, and us to be held accountable to that budget. Every other department in this city has a travel budget that they are held accountable to, so we should be no different. Second, I think we should be more transparent, and in doing so, right now, we never announce when we are or not traveling. I think that as part of the ceremonial travel right now, we only are required to do that if someone else is paying for our travel, not if the city is paying for our travel. I think we should have to announce on the dais, at least when we returned, that we did travel, and the purpose for that travel. I think we owe it to our voters, because they do look at travel, and they see it as a trip on their dime.
If I could, ma'am, I just want to clarify. When I said aspirations, I'm not saying, speaking too professional or personal, I would say aspirations. I was mentioning, referencing, perhaps there's something that you, a project, something you would seek more information about in your district, and so your aspirations would be for your district. So I just want to clarify.
Yeah, and we've all-
I used the word aspiration.
We've all had travel like that, but managed to stay within our budget when we did it. And I think that's the point, is you have to prioritize. We make departments prioritize. So, for example, Councilwoman Nettles and I took a trip to Nebraska, because they have a medical innovation district there. I'm, one of my aspirations is to have a strong medical innovation district here that straddles District Nine and District Eight. So we took that trip. And to your point, that is aspirational for our district, but we also had to prioritize that trip within our budget. And I think that's what it comes down to, is that we should be held accountable in the same way that we, as a body, hold other departments accountable. And that is included in your travel budget. Now, we can have a discussion about what that travel budget looks like. I think when we came to it initially, it was an average. We looked at, on average, where did we typically go? NLC, TML, National Association of Black Elected Officials, you know, one sister cities trip. What? You didn't get invited? Oh, sorry. And so, that's how we came to that. So I think coming to a reasonable number is, is where we should be, and also making sure that Alan gets that invitation, so we don't feel left out.
Councilwoman Martinez, and then Councilwoman Nettles.
So here's an idea. How about we just add travel-related requests to the agenda?
So, I was going to suggest, as part of the next year's budget process, we could start off in our April meeting with, with a discussion about council travels for next year's budget, and get an idea of have every council member that, where they typically go, and then we could come up with council budget line items.
Because, do we currently have a travel budget per council?
Yes. It's, it's basically a carryover from the year-year, based on previous year's average travel. And so, that's how it's been done for years. We could turn it into a, these are the likely, this is the likely trips I'll take. Like, that's what every department does in the city. If, you know, they're going to a conference, those kind of things, that's how those are put together. In the past, it's just been at the discretion of the council member, as they go on, on the year that they're in. So, we do it either way.
Our travel currently follows under our general fund budget.
Part of the city manager's budget.
Right.
And there's a line item for each district that says travel and training, and it's a line item for, that covers that.
Okay. But on our current budget, okay, workshop. Okay, so, so roughly maybe $16,000?
Roughly, I think that's the number.
Yearly?
Yearly, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think if we're looking at these numbers, just to give people an idea, so $16,000 a-
For just workshops, travel, training.
$16,000 a year. Okay. So that's the number.
Anybody else? No? Okay, thank you. I'm going to make one comment, because I think it's not in the IR, and I've said this before, especially when there were questions from media about this. The one thing that, that I regret, and I think everybody does, is, well, we had two all-star people in the mayor's office, both Ethel and Ms. Tanisha, that helped manage travel and council budgets, and did such a great job for years. And when Ethel retired, she put all of her knowledge with Tanisha. And then when Tanisha got sick, we just weren't prepared for that, honestly. And HR does such a great job, really resource planning, for succession planning, and we just didn't do that with Tanisha. And so it created this huge void that's, that really is unspoken, and all of this confusion. The great thing about Tanisha, we all were scolded at one time or another about something we did wrong, or line item wrong, or she fixed it for us. She handled all of the purchasing. And though our new process is okay, we can, we can, it's a little clumsy, we're going to get used to it. But I just want us to acknowledge that, to me, that's one of the biggest voids we had when Tanisha died. So, we're going to come back from it. You've all raised good questions about the P card, and more training needed, make sure no one's out of pocket for six months. That's ridiculous, making sure that all of you feel like that's handled better. So, just communicate better to Whitney in our office on the training side. And then, we can have a healthy discussion around budgets. I think that was a great suggestion from both Jeanette and Elizabeth, about announcing your travel, where you're going afterwards. Transparency is key. On a positive note, I would say I got a few articles yesterday from, from City of Austin. There were several articles about their spending, which is completely different than what we're experiencing here in Fort Worth. And I, I do think, and you said this well, Alan, while there are some questions here that all of our colleagues have raised, we're still in a really great place and position as a city. We want to keep it that way, and have good light on the community, and maybe just, let's tweak things a little bit, and be a little more transparent with each other, I think could be helpful. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Reggie.
Thanks, Reggie.
Next item is 25-0125, Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program Updates. And Chelsea St. Louis is here to answer any questions.
No questions.
Next one's 25-0126. It's the Proposed 2026 City of Fort Worth Housing Tax Credit Policy. Casey Thomas is here to answer any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Hall.
Sorry, let me get back to my question. I had a, one of the recommended changes for 2026 was removing the community outreach requirement. And I understood, I can infer that presumably because they are, that developers are seeking to acquire or rehabilitate something that's already an affordable housing development. But why remove the community outreach requirement? Just to, just want to understand that.
Certainly. Part of it is not setting up unrealistic expectations, because the property is already in affordable housing development. If there is input from the community that indicates that that is something that they do not like or do not support, we would not be able to change the use of the property at that time, since it is already affordable housing.
Would the feedback coming from the community only solely be about not liking affordable housing, as to maybe setting expectations for the community, or expressing issues that they may have experienced from the previous owners, or just other insight they might want to offer, other than we just don't like affordable housing?
Yes, that is possible. Yes, we could potentially get that kind of feedback. And so if that is something that you think would be valuable to keep in, we could certainly look at that.
I would appreciate that consideration. I think that community outreach is just that. I don't think it's a, it's, I'm not the developer, but I don't think it's too much to ask to give people a platform to talk about issues that they experienced, or just expectations, or just having a place, a platform for their, their insights.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Nell?
Casey, could you give us a brief overview about the first big change, the adding Neighborhood Improvement Program areas, as one of the city's designated revitalization areas? What exactly does that do for us?
Sure. So what it does, so currently, the different areas that we have where these properties could be in are neighborhood empowerment zones, our TIF districts, our urban villages, also our high opportunity zone areas, and then our regional mixed-use facilities. What we're looking to do by including the Neighborhood Improvement areas are, we're really trying to make the impact of those Neighborhood Improvement Program areas really big. And so anything that we can do to support the growth and development of that program, we'd like to focus, focus that effort. And so that's the reason for including the Neighborhood Improvement areas, is this another opportunity to bring improvements to those areas. And so by adding the Neighborhood Improvement area, we would be opening up affordable housing developments that are located in those areas.
In those areas, specifically, are these the designated areas?
Correct. So, for example, we just did the, so we have Fairhaven, Stop Six, Como, all of those areas that are designated as Neighborhood Improvement areas. New Mitchell is the most recent one. So if there was a developer who is looking to put an affordable housing, housing tax credit property in that area, they would be eligible under the policy now.
Any other questions?
Yes, you do. Okay, go ahead, Chris.
Your bullet point number two, removing the community outreach requirement, I understand that piece, but the requirement- that piece, but the requirement for developers who want to do the housing credit, that's not affordable housing, still will have to do community outreach.
Correct, yes. They would still be required to do community outreach, and then they would also still be required to meet with the council member to get their support for the development as well.
And, correct me, this is when they want to apply, but they still have to go through the process of applying, and still also need a zoning change?
Correct, yes. So if it is a property that requires zoning, then they would still have to go through that process. Getting a resolution of support or a resolution of no objection does not eliminate that process. So it's possible that someone could get a resolution of support or a resolution of no objection. It requires a zoning change, and then they not get approval for the zoning change, or they may receive approval for the zoning change.
Okay. And I don't know if we revisited this, I don't think we did, but I think about, a few months ago, we had those three, that came to council, I think we pulled it and had a meeting about it. Had we discussed how we're going to communicate this information to our residents? Because I think some of our residents were upset that we did the resolution, because basically, it was against the law if we didn't, if they met all the requirements. And so, it seemed like that we was approving something, we also need to do a zoning change on, if I'm making sense.
I'm not sure if I clearly understand, but I'll try and take a, attempt at answering the question. So, so if, you're correct. So the policy, what we try to do is if an affordable housing project meets all the requirements that are in the policy, then as a department, we submit that as a recommended for either a resolution of support or a resolution of no objection. We don't try and make a, a decision at that point in terms of the merits of the project, or make any decisions at that point related to zoning. And so then, those projects are submitted to you. There were some projects at times where if the council member does not feel like the developer has provided adequate outreach to either the council member's office, or the neighborhood association, then sometimes those projects do get pulled from the, the recommendation that we're submitting.
So the communication piece for me, is when we do the, a resolution to the community, how can we communicate better to the community that this is just a resolution, because they have met all the requirements?
We can take a look at that. We do have, the developer does provide to us a list of the neighborhood association that they are in contact with. And so, we, what we can look at is, once the mayor and council communication is approved, whether you all vote to accept those resolutions or not, then we could do some communication back to those neighborhood groups and let them know what the decision was.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Next one's 25-0127. It's an update on the high-impact outcomes and program expansion. Bethany Warner's here.
I think there's interest in having Bethany walk through this.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Tara Perez is out at a conference today, so you've got me. You just want to go over specific questions?
Any questions, Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Bethany. So, the contract is over, correct? The pilot's complete?
Yes, the pilot is complete, and as of October 1, we're now on a new contract. That is the contract that council approved at the June 17 city council meeting.
Is that another seventeen months? Will you remind me?
Now we're on one year, just a normal contract year. The first one was seventeen months, because it was a mid-year begin, so that's why the odd timeframe. But now we're just on annual contract full program.
Okay. And, I mean, reading through the IR, I think this has been a tremendous success. I think we've reached a population that we all see that are very visible, that we have not been able to reach otherwise. So I want to commend all of our partners, because this really is a big lift. And it's high-impact for a reason, because it takes a lot of effort, I think, across the city, and high-touch point to get it done. I noticed the only goal we didn't meet was the housing piece, but is that mostly on the client's side?
Do you mean the, the fourth line of the table? The, up to forty was the goal?
Correct, yes.
Correct, yes. So, we had that one as an up to forty goal, because it was, the idea was leveraging other people's housing programs. So if those didn't exist to work with, there were, there were fewer than forty to work with, so we just couldn't reach forty. So other vouchers that were in existence, there were some that we thought were going to come to fruition in that timeframe that did not.
Okay. And that had nothing to do with client acceptance?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Beck?
Yeah. So, reading through this real quick, the second page, last paragraph, MHMR has agreed to use its Project Forty set aside with Fort Worth Housing Solutions for the High-Impact Program. What is Project Forty?
Oh, that's a great question. I can get Tara to follow up with you to be more specific, but the, the Action Plan for Housing Solutions sets aside a plan for how they're going to use all their different vouchers, and there are different categories for different reasons and different types of uses. Specifically, the Project Forty, ten of them are being used by Partnership Home, and there were thirty remaining that were allocated towards MHMR but not in use. And MHMR said to the city that we would like those thirty to go towards high-impact. So Housing Solutions is working with us to redirect those thirty toward the High-Impact Program and get them into use. So we're not taking vouchers that are being utilized right now. They're targeted, but not utilized.
Okay. And just so I'm, I'm clear on how our numbers, because, so, as Councilmember Hill brought up, so we didn't get to the forty, but we only got to that thirty-three number, because that's the number of vouchers that we had available through the different programs.
Right. So you have forty-three were provided housing assistance through our general fund master lease program, so that's three over the forty goal, and then thirty-three are folks in other voucher programs.
Okay. And so, with the additional thirty, does that get us to a, like a sixty number, or is that in lieu of the thirty-three that we have now?
It would be on top of. So this is thirty more people.
Okay, perfect.
Thirty new individuals into the program with these thirty new slots.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for putting this together. Thank you for spearheading this project. I know Tara's not here. I can personally attest to the tremendous amount of work that has gone into this, and the tremendous amount of benefit, to the point now where we are down to kind of several people that are, you know, we're down to a couple folks in some of our key areas that we're trying to house, that, you know, still meet the, the program's requirements, but for one reason or another, we haven't been able to, you know, make them a success. But I've personally seen a huge difference in downtown and near South Side. So I just want to thank everybody for being part of this.
And? Councilmember Peoples?
I continue to lobby to include District Five in the study, and I know Tara's not here, so I'll just tell you today, we have problems with chronic homelessness, and I have been working with the folks in District Eleven. Just by virtue of one street, I have problems with chronic homelessness, and we're right outside of District Eleven, and so we need to get Five in this program.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peoples. So I, with the thirty additional vouchers, we're going to continue working with the NPOs, which worked really well for us the first round, they really know these areas. While we don't plan on adding any target areas, we do accept some citywide referrals into the program, and we can talk with your NPO. Something also not in this IR, that we recently are also kicking up conversations with our EMS folks and FIRE, and how we can also coordinate with what they're seeing for referrals into the program.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Bethany, not that significant migration changes have affected the target areas, but what I'm beginning to see, in the Stockyards/Northside area, is the more development that comes, especially north of the Stockyards, on that corridor, there, there have been recently large homeless encampments that have been disbanded and displaced. So those people have to find other places to be at, right? Where are they going becomes the question. Are they staying in the area or migrating to areas further out? Are we actively looking at that to make sure that we have an accurate read on the target areas in regards to movement of homeless people?
I think that's a good question, because part of this program was to look at where individuals might be, that wasn't the traditional East Lancaster area. And we do continue to look at where folks are on the annual pit count, and whenever, the point-in-time count that's done every January with Partnership Home, that is that spot, that quick snapshot of where folks are, and looking to see if there's movement year-over-year. Right now, when we're looking at those maps, the, the, you know, hotspot areas are remaining the ones we see, but that next point-in-time count is coming up on January 22nd, so we'll have another year of data to inform that. We also follow the My Fort Worth app complaint data to see where residents are voicing concerns. And so, yes, that's something we'll continue to monitor as the, as the program goes forward, and as we continue to, to seek how we grow it and expand and meet resources of where are those issues, and are they migrating?
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Nettles?
Couple things I just want to kind of put on record, and make sure I understand in the community. So, this High-Impact Program are assisting individuals who are on the street, not in physical shelters, in these, in these areas.
This program, yes. It's directed at individuals who are experiencing long-term unsheltered homelessness. So, unsheltered, yes. Also, we're looking for folks that have been unsheltered for at least a year, but the median is seven years for people in the program, and who we suspect that they have severe mental illness. Of course, that's not validated until you're in the program, but our NPOs are pretty good at having a strong indicator of who they suspect would be a candidate for this. So unsheltered, long-term, and severe mental illness.
Okay. Unsheltered is on the street. Long-term, maybe they are in the shelter, but they've been there for a year or so?
Have been unsheltered for at least a year. So not, not in a shelter, on the street.
Okay. And so, I think it would help, especially historic South Side and District Eight, to know the number of people who have successfully made it through this program. Because when they, what, what they see is what their current sight of those who are still on shelter. And it seems as though Fort Worth, or District Eight, or the elected official is not doing nothing to help house these individuals, where we are doing the work. And, because you see here that we're doing the work, if we can maybe, able to break that up by area, is what we're doing, in East Lancaster, the homeless shelter, do you think that we, we can get like a breakdown of that, or is it kind of more broad?
No, yes, we can. In the June presentation, we had a breakdown, but that's, there's not an update to that in this IR, so we can follow up with you and give you the chart of where folks who are into housing from this program originated from, yes. But we, we know with the target areas, and as the, with there being seven target areas and approximately eighty slots, it is hard for areas that have a larger population to feel the impact of so few. So we're hoping, the hope is, as more spots are added, as the program grows, people really do feel the impact of high-impact.
And along those lines, I know you and I've discussed how to communicate this better to the public, and adding a better webpage, maybe graphics that council members can print out, or provide to their districts. Is that still in the works, Bethany?
Yes.
Okay. That's great. Remind me the, the budget originally for this program in fiscal year 2024, when it was a pilot, do you remember? Or maybe I'll put you on the spot with the 2025 budget, if you remember what it might be.
So the, it's about 2.2 in the annual. So I think the original seventeen-month pilot was around three million, and then FY25 was 2.2, and FY26 is also 2.2.
That's what I meant, 26, thank you. Okay. And that's helpful. I think maybe when we, I think we're going to do these more frequently, am I right? These IRs to update on, on homelessness?
I, I think we're all-
Once a quarter, or so, just said, okay, okay.
I think we're also looking with the team on a, you know, heads up, this is a project we're working on, but a public-facing dashboard on homeless strategies citywide, to even beyond maybe regular IRs, give folks a window into the programs the city is running. We're looking at some different cities who have public-facing dashboards, both on overall homeless system data, but outcomes of cities' programs and projects, and camp cleanup and everything, so that they can easily access that information anytime they're curious, and that council members can easily point folks in the right direction to learn more, and not always be asking us for information, so it can feel a bit more open and accessible.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nettles. Yeah, of course.
Mayor brought up a good point. With the, the budget that we have set, what is the biggest hurdle that we are seeing for, for success? Is it getting them into the program? I think when you said up to forty, you don't have enough people or enough programs to put them in. Is that the biggest hurdle that we have in, for this program?
So expanding the program comes in two parts, and what we're talking about just today, the, the expansion we announced, came in the form of getting thirty additional vouchers into the program. So we do want to see that rental assistance availability increase, and we're continuing to work on some strategies to do that. But the other side of that is the services, so the ACT team, the high-level care psychiatric medical team. There's a small caseload for this program because of the intensive resources needed, so it's about one to ten of staff to clients. That means every time we get ten more vouchers in the program, we need one more staff. So, as we look at options to grow the program, we're looking at both, how do we get more rental voucher resources, and how do we grow the services alongside it? And what is the overall gross goal for the program? Because as we've mentioned with High-Impact, this is not the program for every person experiencing homelessness. It's a very, very specific subgroup that we're talking about. So what, what is our ultimate end goal? How many people truly need these services? And then what are the steps to get there? So with what we're coming up to you today, we really appreciate MHMR and Fort Worth Housing Solutions for allowing us to bring thirty more vouchers into the program. We're working with an existing budget to have the staffing resources to do that, but for growth beyond that, we're going to need to look at some different strategies to make that happen.
Any other questions for Bethany? Great job. Thanks for your team, too.
Mayor, that's all the IRs.
Okay. I think we're moving into any future agenda items. No, excuse me, not yet. We have a work session. Item first. But changes to board's memberships, or some zoning cases in the next meeting that you're concerned about. Carlos?
Yeah, regarding board of adjustment, I just confirmed today, the willingness of my appointee to continue serving that capacity, and all that's left is I have to select an alternate. So that'll be coming up and included in that package for the eleven.
Thank you, Carlos. Any other questions? Nope? Okay. I'm going to move to aviation overview and capital program update with Roger Venables, our aviation director.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of City Council. City Manager Chapa. Good afternoon. I'm excited to be here today to share a little bit about the aviation system, the city of Fort Worth. But before I get started, I do want to introduce a couple of folks behind me that are in, that play an integral role in delivering the services that the aviation department does today. I'm going to turn around here and introduce Joe Hammond. He's our assistant director of Spinks Airport. I'll ask them all to stand up and embarrass them. So, Aaron Barth, our assistant director, he's housed at Meacham. We've got Ricardo Bosallo, he's our senior administrative services manager. He's the budget guy. He's the one that keeps us in check. In the background there, we've got Sasha Kane, she is our grants manager. Right beside her, Katia Flores, she's our senior contract compliance manager. On the back there in red, hiding, is Kristy Medina. She is our senior accountant, and right beside her, integral part of the team, is our real estate manager, Barbara Goodwin. Now Barbara, I'm going to call her out specifically, she's the one that actually designed our 100-year commemorative coin. So she is the responsible party for that. I'm really privileged to, to work alongside such a great group of dedicated professionals. And now that I've introduced them, who's running the airport?
Good question.
Anyway, there, I, again, I really appreciate them and the opportunity to introduce them. They don't really get enough face time. So anyway, what I wanted to do was give you more or less a report card, you know, what's happened over the last five years. I'll talk about our revenue growth a little bit, in terms of operations at each one of these airports, and then look at our capital program. Of course, we operate in a system, we call it a system. It's really comprised of three primary airports, Perot Field, Meacham, and Spinks. Each have different characteristics that make them unique in our system. If you look at Perot Field, it's subject to a third-party management agreement that's, you know, they're in charge of the day-to-day operations and maintenance, but the city is still, overall, responsible for capital programming tied to that airport. Primarily, it's an industrial airport. Meacham International, 100 years old, is the, the granddaddy of general aviation. It has become and involved into more of a business jet center. Now you still see all the other amenities you used to have associated with the general aviation airport, right? Everything from MRO facilities that address avionics, to airframe, to paint shops, to, Everything from MRO facilities that address avionics, to airframe, to paint shops, to flight schools, both fixed wing and helicopter. Then we have Spinks, that's the newest in our system. It is more recreational, also has its share of business jet traffic, and is continuing to grow. It's the youngest airport we have. We acquired it in 1988, I think is when we officially acquired the airport. So, before I get into the revenue and operations part of this, I just want to set the stage that our airport system is completely self-sustaining. Where it's all the revenue that's generated by our airports pay for all the operating, maintenance, and capital costs associated with theirs airports. So, it's all user-based. So, when you look at the type of revenue sources that we have, we have land leases, hangar leases, landing fee rates. Again, all those involve a user of the airfield, and that's the idea, is to remain self-sustaining, where we don't have to ask for any funding from the general fund to support any of those services that we offer at the airport. The other side of that coin is, too, revenue that's generated at the airport cannot be diverted to, say, general fund activity. Again, the FAA wants general aviation airports and any commercial service there to be self-sustaining. We start with operations and build from there. Operations are really important. It not only indicates the overall health of your airport, particularly if you're in an environment of increasing operations over time. So, if you look at the calendar year from 2020 through 2024, we had a 7% annual growth rate in operations across the board, some more than others. Meacham experienced about 11.2%. So, again, an indicator of good growth at the airport, but that's tied strongly, there's a strong correlation between operational growth and revenue growth, which you'll see in just a moment. So, in terms of operating revenue, the top line represents our revenue from 2020 through 2025. We've almost doubled in terms of our revenue growth since that time. If you look between '20 and 2021, we had a significant spike, almost a 39% increase in revenue in just that one year. That year was the pandemic year. That's when everybody was ordering everything and having it flown in. There's a lot of air cargo traffic. Amazon had just got its legs. It opened at the end of 2019. 2020, it opened up a whole new world in terms of package delivery. Same with FedEx. They saw a significant increase in package delivery over that time. You look down below that, there's other contributing factors that have increased, too, in that revenue stream over time. Land leases, new hangar leases, we've had contractual adjustments in those leases over time, too. A lot of them are tied to CPI adjustments on an annual basis. The same with our air cargo operating agreements that we have with those air cargo carriers out at Perot Field, including FedEx. So, the next line down that you see is the land, hangar, and facility lease. These three lines that I'm going to talk about today are our largest revenue centers. We have others. We've got U.S. Customs fees that we charge for landing at Meacham and at Perot Field. We also have transited aircraft parking. These are smaller revenue source categories. These represent the largest categories that we have. The line right below it is our landing fees. As you can imagine, from 2020 through 2022, that huge spike, again, pandemic-related, but post-pandemic, we've seen kind of a leveling off in those landing fees. What's tempered a little bit of that, too, with the reduced air cargo traffic, is we've had annual adjustments, CPI adjustments to those landing fee rates over that same period of time, where we see things now is kind of smoothing out, right? From '24 to '25, we actually saw a 2% uptick for the first time in our landing fees. But again, that's a good, healthy growth over that period of time from 2020 through 2025. And of course, the last line item is our fuel flowage fees. That's about a 9% compound annual growth rate over that period of time, nice and steady, right? Moving from about 1.5, a little over 5 million in 2020, to almost $2.4 billion. So, again, just want to highlight the significant amount of growth, both in terms of operation and in revenue over that period of time. So, what's contributed to some of that, as I mentioned, too, is new hangar development. What you see at Meacham, we've leased about 19.8 acres of land for future development. In about 2015, we eliminated the crosswind runway that was out there, 0927, because it was an underutilized runway, and TechDOT was not going to fund it anymore as part of its capital program. So, we worked with them to redefine new taxiways in order to accommodate future land development. So, eventually, we created green space, is what we did. So, in 2023, we built Commander Road from Main Street into the Midfield, which opened up about 20, it's about 29 acres in total for redevelopment. Lots of leasing activity. We completed that road in 2023, and since that time, we're up to 19 acres, and I think by the end of the year, we'll be at 24 of those 29 acres under lease. Those projects are scheduled to be complete or in substantive completion by 2028. That'll put almost 280,000 square feet of additional hangar space. Now, these would be hangar space that would accommodate corporate flight departments, it could be aircraft management companies, corporate charters, you name it, aircraft storage. We're seeing a lot more larger jets. We see a lot of activity actually come from Europe. You know, we started out in 2019, about 59 flights we were clearing at U.S. Customs. Now, we're at about 430 to 440 flights a year, and we're seeing them from all over the globe. We're seeing them from Europe, South America, Africa, of course, Canada. We've got most of North America all covered, right? So, we're seeing it come from all over the place. That's pretty substantial, because it's accommodating what we see as current and future growth, particularly in the business jet category. With Spinks, same thing. These three that you see highlighted in the yellow box here, these are three additional taxi lanes that were completed at the end of last year. Those have gone under lease. It's about 5.7 acres, including the one up on the far right, some vacant land that we've leased for private sector development. He's putting in 17 box hangars and 24 T-hangers. Again, continued growing demand for aviation opportunities at both our airports. So, those will be completed by 2026, putting about 85,000-plus square feet of additional hangar space at that airport. So, where do we get our capital funding from? You know, the significant portion of our capital funding doesn't come from just our aviation revenue, it comes from others, other revenue sources. I want to take a shout out to the FAA and TechDOT Aviation, who, over the last couple of years, have really come through in financing and helping to support through grants, capital improvements at our airports. You'll see the staggering numbers here in just a minute as to what their contribution is, as well as what the Aviation Department has contributed to, to address some of our critical infrastructure needs at our airports. But those were the FAA grants, TechDOT grants, Future Grant Match is actually a fund that we maintain ourselves. We put money in there on an annual basis to help support and match obligations that we have. So, every time we get a grant, say it's a 90-10 grant, 90% of it's being covered by either TechDOT or the FAA, we have a 10% match obligation that's a part of that. The Alliance 10% Fund is 10% of the revenue that's generated at Perot Field goes into a 10% reserve account. And the reason why is that from the time Perot Field was originally established, the first 350 acres, it was done through a donation. Today, we're up to almost 1,300 acres, represents the size of that airport. The majority of those acres have been donated over the year. So, every time there's a donation, there's a value established on that donation, a land value. We've actually been using over the years the value of that land to meet our capital match obligation. So, if it's a 90-10 split, that 10% match obligation is done with the value of land that was donated. We haven't had to cash fund much of that, in other words. That 10% reserve account is there to account for that period in time when you run out of land credits, and now you've got this large bucket of money that, again, you can be used forward with actual cash match obligations. The Aviation Municipal Fund is a fund that we also contribute to and draw from, from time to time, for our capital obligations at the airport. Or you can have it through specific legislation, as we did in 2021 with the BIL, or the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, where the government just allocated essentially $15 billion to support the nation's air transportation system. Well, all of your general aviation airports and commercial service airports received an allocation, were authorized an allocation each year beginning in 2022, all the way through '26. We can use those allocations that we receive on an annual basis to support our capital program. Now, it has to be airport improvement program eligible projects. But again, since 2022 through 2025, we've received about $3.7 million total, just at Meacham, about $1.5 million at Spinks, and about $6.7 million at Perot Field. Again, where you fall in the category of the National Plan of Integrated Airport System determines on what your annual allocation is, right? You still treat it like a grant, you apply for it, it goes towards an eligible project, but it can help augment your request to them on an annual basis for specific projects, right? And I'll show you how that works in just a moment. Our gas well royalty earnings, so any of those lands that are underneath the airport, again, that's counted as airport revenue. We don't use that to fund our operations. We only use those gas well revenues for one-time capital expenditures. Typically, we roll it into revenue-generating opportunities, like building hangars, for instance, of our own. Same with the gas well investment earnings, that's interest earnings on an annual basis that come to us because of pooled investments. And then, of course, the noise land sale proceeds. I talked to council earlier last year about the noise land sale. We own quite a few acres south of the airport that was acquired as part of a noise mitigation program several years back. We have an obligation, if we don't use the land permanently for airport purposes, that the FAA, there's an expectation that we sell that land, right, for development with compatible land uses to the airport, right? So, there is actual deed restrictions embedded in the deeds that says you can't build churches, you can't build residential properties, you can't be those things that are more sensitive to the airport environment. So, we sold one of those properties here recently, too, in March. We sold about 23 acres. There's a reuse of those funds, and I'll show you where we're proposing to reuse those funds in accordance with FAA regulations. So, the projects that we have today, ongoing and recently completed, our Apron Bravo and Taxiway Gulf, that particular area on Meacham had the lowest pavement condition index anywhere on our field. I'll give you the scale. Zero to 100, it was a 27. Really in bad shape, needed to be replaced. That was part of BIL funding, TechDOT funding, and cash on our part for our match obligation. So, it was the aggregation of those funds that we were able to move forward this project. It's about a $9 million project. We repainted our primary runway. We rebuilt or rehabbed a Gulfstream and Falcon Way, which is essentially an internal service road to the airport. We've got a design build underway for a new maintenance building to replace the aging, physically and functionally obsolete maintenance building that we have today. We got a grant administered through the COG, through TechDOT, to put in a right turn lane at Gate 1. It's just the far north end of Meacham. Today, we don't have a right turn lane there. There's no place for traffic to queue up, and that's where all the deliveries for the fuel trucks or heavy construction equipment come in through Gate 1. So, we're really fortunate to be able to secure that funding to construct that right turn lane. Probably the most exciting one is our Airport Frontage Improvement Project. It's been on the books for a while. I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. But as you can see, that's almost $30 million worth of capital investment made here, just recently completed or currently underway, just for Meacham. This is what the Meacham frontage looks like today. Actually, it looks a little bit different today because we've torn up everything, right? It's under construction. The southbound outside lane today is barricaded off, as you can see on the third picture from the left. But basically, we've got an area where we don't have intermittent curb and gutter, got open bar ditches, you've got sidewalks with poles right in the middle, that's a nice look. All that needs to be replaced. A little over $12 million. Again, that project's underway. We're dropping all overhead utilities. It'll have new streetlight frontage, all new curb and gutter. It's really, at its core, an infrastructure improvement project, but we're taking the opportunity to improve the aesthetics at the same time, right? With new sidewalks, again, new street lighting, much cleaner look along the frontage of the airport, and of course, bookend it with some beautiful monument signs that let you know you're here, you've arrived at Meacham International. So, we'll have one up near Gate 1, and then we'll have one down 38th, next to 38th and Main Street. All right. Part of that BIL funding was $5 billion of it was allocated to kind of address the aging infrastructure of particularly air traffic control towers, and modernize those towers either through rehabilitation, or in some instances, outright replacement. There were 31 control towers selected across the country to be replaced. Meacham made the list, and so, we're going to get a new air traffic control tower. They're already wrapping up the design, anticipate construction to start next year. That's a $13 million project paid for 100% by the FAA to replace the aging tower that was built in the 60s, that's really small, 54 feet tall. The new tower will be at 119 feet, giving better visibility to all parts of the airport, which they don't have today. It'll sit just southeast of the existing tower, if you're familiar with it, and you've been out to the airport. So, for Spinks, these are some of the projects ongoing or just recently completed. We played, Airport Weather Observation System got upgraded, we finished a new vehicle service road, we've got three new taxi lanes being constructed at about $3.9 million. I think that's on your agenda for 1111 to be approved, too, is that funding associated with that and the grant application. Eastside Hangar Taxi Lane Phase 1 Construction Number 4 was recently completed. And then, at Eastside Property Acquisition, what was identified in our master planning effort in 2023 were acquisition opportunities at Spinks. Just so happened, the property owner reached out to us on the east side of the property and had his property for sale. We went ahead and had it appraised, negotiated a deal with that property owner, and ended up acquiring those 36 acres. It provides, it kind of protects the airspace for us in the interim, but it can also be used for future development on the east side of the airport. About $8 million total. Perot Field, we just got done with our Taxiway Papa Extension Phase 3. We've been slowly extending this Taxiway Papa, which sits on the west side of the airport, if you think where Amazon sits out today with their sorting and distribution facilities. This Taxiway continues to extend on to the north. About $8.8 million project complete. We just did our joint resale and pavement repair on one of the primary runways, the ARF truck replacement. So, we got a new aircraft rescue firefighting facility. 1.6, that was primarily paid for by the FAA. Again, land credits were used on our side, and the Fort Worth Fire Department wanted some enhancements, so they paid a little bit of cash to do those. Taxiway Hotel Extension, I mentioned the noise land sale proceeds. That's what we're going to use to extend hotel. Hotel extension is extremely important. It was just a recent groundbreaking with Embraer for the new MRO facility. That's what you see in blue. This Taxiway Extension gives them actual access to the airfield itself. So, again, a good repurpose of those funds that, again, were used to acquire land previously, and now can be repurposed for projects that are AIP-eligible like this. So, that's about $20 million worth of projects recently completed or currently underway. We're wrapping up the design right now of hotel, and we'll start that construction sometime next year. So, our CIP funding support, so I talked a little bit about where all those funding sources are. I think the takeaway here is look over to the far right on that column, 1%. Airport funding, this is our Aviation Department funding, only 20%. So, the rest of the funding that we receive to support our capital and program comes from 80%, is from others. If you look at land credits, FAA grants, TechDOT grants, the noise land sale proceeds, we've got more land to sell out there, by the way, too. So, we're going to have a lot more noise land proceeds that we're going to collect over time. And of course, the BIL and IIJ funding. We will run out of that funding. That program's only go through next year, and then we have a four-year period to have expended it. We are easily going to do that. We want to take every opportunity possible to address our infrastructure needs and use those funds that are available to us. Overall, next five years, $163 million. Now, that assumes that some of these projects I'm about to show you, the FAA actually funds. We apply for those grants, but sometimes we don't get those grants. Sometimes they push it out for a year or two. I think this is a really important project for the airport. We had an engineering study, a very in-depth engineering study, done a couple of years ago to determine the condition of our primary runway at Meacham. It was to look at everything. It wasn't just a PCI study, which is more of a visual observation of the runway. Did deflection testing, core sampling to determine where do we have areas on the primary runway that are in need of significant rehabilitation. We identified those through that engineering study. We also have a parallel taxiway, as you see on the left side of the runway in red, that's been on the books since 2008, and we've not received funding for it. We've received funding for the whole thing now. We stepped forward and said, we'll take care of the design, the engineering design for these improvements. Also, the ILS, which is the instrument landing- Also, the ILS, which is the Instrument Landing System that is aging out there. It is an FAA-owned piece of infrastructure. We're going to go ahead and do the design work at the same time. We're doing that for the runway, for the pavement rehabilitation, and our alternative landing surface. We've applied to the FAA to use Taxiway Alpha, which is not unprecedented, it was done in 2010, as an alternative landing surface when we shut down the primary runway. We're doing that so we maintain continuous operations at the airport. It would be devastating to our FBOs out there, really to the airport sponsor, too, if we shut down that airport for an extended period of time because we wouldn't be collecting fuel flowage fees. You might have aircraft owners that want to leave and may not come back. I mean, it could be devastating. So this is a way for us to implement that program to use Alpha as an alternative landing surface. This will be going through the design phase next year for '26. And then probably latter part of '27, we'll get our funding, which we get from the FAA and TechDOT. But you can see the amount of funding we're getting just for the runway improvements and ILS, $26.5 million. That's a significant amount of funding to receive in one year toward this type of project, much-needed project. We have to take a look at our alternative fuel farm. Right now, we're looking at, because of design bill for the new maintenance building, when it gets put in place, we're going to remove that maintenance building and establish an alternative fuel farm. And the reason why is we need to replace the fuel farm on the north end of the airport. There are 23 underground storage tanks that have been there for 40 years plus. We need to get rid of that. The more modern fuel farms that we have today are all above ground. So this is going to be starting that effort, right? Reestablishing an alternative location for it in the interim while we address the issues on the north end with the current fuel farm by the tanks that we need because they can easily be transported. These are more movable tanks now because they are above ground. Then we'll move in '28 to the fuel farm replacement itself, digging up those existing tanks out there, reconfiguring the site for a new fuel farm. Same time, we're going to address the connector, these two Bravo and Delta. Bravo is the parallel taxi lane for our secondary runway. And Charlie and Delta are kind of segments of those taxiway connectors between the primary and the secondary that we need to have rehabilitated. Bravo and Delta rehabilitation, again, this is the construction piece of it. '28 was actually the design piece. And then, of course, identified in our master plan is creating a helicopter training landing strip. We have a significant amount of operations for helicopter training out at Meacham. Today, they use our taxi lane Bravo next to our secondary runway for emergency landing procedures. And what it does is it skids across the asphalt and kind of tears it up a little bit. We're going to give them their own playground, if you will, on the west side of our secondary runway. Got a couple of other things to clean up, too. Some cracked seal and seal coat and markings on the secondary runway. And another exciting project is the ARF station. Today, there are two fire stations at Meacham. One is our ARF station, which sits within the airport boundary and serves just airfield-related incidences. And then we've got the landside fire station number 25 that sits at the corner of 38th and Main Street. This is taking both those stations, which are aging, actually, the ARF station's really in poor condition, and combining those stations, much like we have today as a joint-use station at Perro Field. So you've got one side that'll serve the airport, and the other will serve the landside. So again, you're gaining some efficiencies, too, by only having one facility and not two separate standalone facilities. So we'll go ahead and cover the design on that in 2030. For Spinks, we've got some underdrain design that we need to do. What we found is on the primary runway, we've got some seepage coming up from underneath the runway, and it's kind of, I don't know, degrading, the subgrade out there. We need to put some underdrain construction. We've got rehabilitate Alpha and Charlie, which are some taxiways we have out there. So most of this stuff here will just be the design and construction, with construction probably occurring at the latter part of the year. These are already funded projects, too. It's already on the CIP for TechDOT to fund that. Our medium-intensity lighting systems for Alpha, Delta, and Golf. We're going to do another PCI study for all pavements that are out there, the taxiways, ramps, and primary runways. Again, some more of our medium-intensity taxiway lightings. We're looking at a hangar construction project, too, just north of the one we built in 2023. This would be a 10-unit box hangar at about $5.5 million. Again, we'll fund that out of that gas well unspec fund balance that we've accumulated out of the gas well royalties. Perimeter fence replacing, seems like we're always replacing fences out at an airport. And of course, we'll expand our apron here. We've got a public use apron out there, too. We want to be able to expand it for additional transient aircraft parking opportunities at the airport. And then I'll move on to Perro Field. Taxiway Hotel Extension, again, next year for construction. We're also looking at the joint resale and pavement repair on the west runway. And then we've got another Papa Extension. We're only going to do the fence and road relocation because right now, the road sits in the runway safety area of that runway. It needs to be moved out, so it's a safety issue for us. It looks like a lot of money just to move a road and a fence, but there's also topography challenges out there. So we are going to do the design on this thing to accommodate what we see as the future extension of that pavement section of Taxiway Papa to the north. This would be the actual design of 4 and 5, Taxiway Papa Extension. We'll actually do the construction of the fence and road in '27. Here, we move on. We're shoulder preservation. The shoulders are important to your runway. Not only does it protect the edges of the runway itself, it creates an opportunity for water to flow off of the runway itself. It's also there in case aircraft deviates from the runway itself. It can course correct and has an area to do that. These shoulders are typically asphalt, but they need to withstand the weight of that aircraft as it courses correct back onto the runway. So they play an important role. Again, we don't have these funded yet. These we continue to apply for with the FAA. Same with Taxiway Papa Extension, 4 and 5 Extension. Again, we could use some of those noise land sale proceeds as we continue to do that to kind of offset some of that discretionary ask from the FAA. There's Papa Extension. Keel rehabilitation in 2030, significantly expensive project. Again, we'll have another pavement management report done at the same time to make absolutely sure that we need to, which sections of the keel we need to replace, but we're planning for it, right? You've got to plan for these things. Our capital programs are not just five years. They're five-year, 10-year, 15-year plans. So the keel section, if you think about that, that's the core of your runway. That's where you receive the most amount of weight-bearing activity on the runway. That's the keel section. So we wouldn't necessarily replace the whole runway itself. Okay, so we went from all that to community connection, which I think is really exciting. This is an opportunity, obviously, for us to connect with kids. We normally do it through career days. We encourage either at summer day camps, schools. We've even had the homeschool organization that we hooked up with to bring the homeschoolers out there. Again, sometimes they don't have an opportunity with kind of structured field trips and had them come out to the airport. We spend time with them at the museums first because they love to turn knobs and push buttons, right? Take them from there. We bring them into the conference center. They get an opportunity to go out onto the airfield itself and visit with PD and fire and see all the cool stuff they've got. So really, I think this is one of the most important things that we do, is reaching out to the youth, right? And it's not, they see these planes flying back and forth and think, oh, you know, I can never be a pilot. Well, you can. But guess what? There's other things, too. There are aircraft mechanics, there are administrators, right? There are engineers, there are planners. So what are the key takeaways? Well, airport system operations are growing about 7% on an annual basis. Again, our revenue has almost doubled in the last five years. We've had a compound annual growth rate of about 13.3%, really healthy. Significant revenue growth, as I mentioned, really right out of the pandemic, from '20 to '21 with 39% spike in revenue. I see it's stabilized, right, in the last two or three years. We're now at about 3% to 5%, which we think is healthy. And you're going to see a lot of that is based on contractual adjustments, but over time. But also, we're having new hangars built. There will be new-based aircraft out there. There'll be new fuel flowage opportunities for the city. And then, of course, you can see our capital investment strategy is, let's get out there and let's start taking care of that aging infrastructure because we have this significant revenue growth and we have the opportunity, and to be a good steward, to go out, replace those aging, that maintenance building. Let's look at that frontage itself, and let's get the new infrastructure that we need in there to make it operate more efficiently. So both on the landside and the airside. Our primary, I guess, number one is airside. But number two, we have an opportunity to address some of those landside deficiencies as well. So that's all I got. So have you got any questions?
Thank you, Roger. Any questions from council? Yes, Councilwoman Flores.
Roger, thanks for that presentation. As far as Meacham is concerned, using Taxiway Alpha, you know, as an alternate runway, will it get any necessary improvements, you know, prior to using that under the CIP?
Yeah, that's part of what we're going to be evaluating as a part of the implementation plan for the conversion of Taxiway Alpha is to do an engineering report on particularly the N3s because we want to make sure, you know, we're very fortunate, number one, to have a parallel taxiway. Number two, to be as wide as it is. And number three, we think it's done at the same strength as the primary runway, design strength. But we want to make absolutely sure that it's a safe landing surface for it to land on. So if we get into the situation where we've done that engineering report and we determine we need to do some work to it, then we're going to, we'll address that before we convert the runway. There are things that you need to do regardless, right? We need to change the edge lighting. It's much different than it is for a taxiway, right? All the geometrics of it have to mimic that of your primary runway, right? So all your runway safety area setbacks, all your object-free setbacks, everything has to mimic that, including your pavement markings. So there is a cost to conversion, and we're willing to absorb that and recognize those costs. What we don't know, the unknown right now, is that, is there anything in the pavement condition of the surface itself that we need to address first before the conversion?
I think we'll be better off, you know, for it, in a way, kind of gain.
It'll always be there, you know? Once we get done with this project, we're anticipating it'll be another 15 to 20 years before you'll have to touch that primary runway. This is a significant rehabilitation project.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions for Roger? Terrific update. Thank you very much, Roger, and to your entire team for taking the time to be here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Council, that's the conclusion of our presentations today. Are there future requests for agenda items for Council Consider, Jeanette?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a minute since I asked this, but I feel like we need to revisit it. So gunshots continue to be a big concern in District 11 and I'm sure across the city. So I'd like to request an IR on how we are using our gunshot detector equipment to address this issue and specifically numbers on any, you know, citations that we've issued or anything that's been done against those that are pretty much shooting guns within the city. Thank you.
Any other updates or requests? Councilwoman Nettles?
I want the city to look at options of working with the ISD as providing some type of educational bond. I know the City of Austin did something two years ago. We can visit, what we can partner with for the ISDs for education. Also, a presentation during my bond meeting.
Repeat that. J S, you repeat your first.
So what the City of Austin can do to partner with the ISD, such as educational bond, I think the City of Austin.
Education bond?
Education bond. I think the City of Austin put something on the ballot, and the voters voted for it two years ago.
Are you saying something, are you saying some type of allocation to support the district in the way of the city having a bond? Is that what you're saying? Supporting a partnership?
The City of Austin works with Austin ISD, and they put a bond on the ballot for $46 million to go towards education, I think, due to pay increase for teachers to increase people to want to work.
I know they funded, I think they were parent-teacher advisors that the City of Austin paid for, that the city paid for it, but they actually worked with parents in the schools to help them work through issues. I'm not sure if it's the same thing, but I know, I think they were called parent-teacher advisors. But they helped where they had a lot of English as a second language students, and they were advisors that worked with those parents to help get those students more acclimated.
Sure, I can provide some background for you this afternoon. The second one, during my bond meeting, some residents was concerned about the, what would the $5 million be allocated for the housing, how it's going to be worked? And then if there's a mechanism of adding more dollars in there. And I believe that the neighborhood services can put together some type of IR letting us know what we can do with $5 million or what we can do with any more than that. And then the last IR I have is, I don't know if it's IR. Boy, I do want a IR. It's kind of crazy, but IR on the IR requests. There has been several IRs that I requested that has not come back across this table. And so I want a date when they were requesting it, when they were actually brought to council.
Anyone else? Make sure your mic's on, Deborah. I think it is, but is it on?
Sorry, if we had, if we could have a calendar when we request IRs, when they come back. So for example, I asked about the IR for us to look at a new sister city. And I know I'd just like to see it on the calendar and when we can expect some of those things to come up.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, perfect. Meeting adjourned.